Good evening and welcome to the Town and Douglas Planning Board meeting for February 10th, 2022. Time is now 7:02. First item on the agenda, no public comment, no A and Rs. We have a 7:00 PM public hearing continued from January 13th, 2022, Family Convenience Center, application for site plan review and Aquifer special permit, 74 Main Street, possible votes.
My name is David Feist with CMG Engineering. I'm here tonight with Ray Whitehead, the chairman of the Sanlit, his manager. Well, there's been a peer review letter that's been issued, so I guess I'll ask the board as what you prefer as far as our presentation. I know a lot of the items were addressed with the current set of plans that have been submitted. So we'd be happy to either go through any of the remaining comments or just answer any remaining questions you might have.
Let's do the comments, the remaining comments from the letter.
Okay.
And how they, how you answered them. So whatever revisions remain.
As far as the remaining comments, there's a few in here also, I guess, where McCarty Engineering deferred to the planning board, that I don't know if we want to go through those as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'll start with item number four, which I believe just has to do with the, just the special permit related to the impervious cover.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I would just, I guess, ask the board, it sounds like, again, it's allowed by special permit because of when the Aquifer protections are.
Was, okay, so that's under the Aquifer. That is a waiver request that is in writing in our packet?
I believe, I guess, I guess I would defer.
Did you, do you have any additional waivers that you're requesting?
I believe this is one of, again, I don't, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we would need it submitted in writing. You can write it, what?
Sorry, I'm just waiting for you. May I ask?
Yeah.
Sorry, may I, thank you, Madam Chair. It's one of the review criteria for Aquifer special permits, not something that's a waiver. It's when you render more than 15% impervious of a lot, it triggers the special permit requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So you're, you're good on that. You've already agreed for it.
Thank you. Number nine, I guess, is just related to fire hydrant near the project site. Again, I don't believe we received any response to fire department, whoever, everyone's aware the fire department is right next door and there is a hydrant located just on the other side of the intersection. Item number thirteen, I guess, related to, it was just acknowledged that the deliveries will, the WB62 delivery vehicles, the larger tractor trailers, and again, most of the deliveries, you know, are made by the smaller WB50s. So again, that's just, again, if there was any additional information the planning board needed, we don't believe WB62s will be accessing the site. So again, we just noted that in our letter.
Would the applicant object to having a condition prohibiting that type of vehicle for deliveries?
You don't have control over that. I mean, they deliver in whatever vehicle. I can just tell you in 20 years, we haven't had one yet, but I can't, I mean.
Well, the concern.
Yeah, the turning radius on an extremely long tractor trailer, I think, is, is the concern.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how to, you know, it's, I feel that it's beyond our control. I mean, I, I don't know how to prohibit it. Do you put up a sign? I mean, do I tell all my vendors?
Name and address for the record, just so the minute taker.
I'm sorry, Ray Whitehead, 17 Pinkett Road, Webster.
So, yeah, so if there's not a template provided.
If need be, is part of our responses too. We could just throw a WB62 turning template on there. Again, show that it can maneuver around the site or not.
Okay.
That's it. If that's acceptable.
Yeah, I can't see prohibiting them. I mean, you gotta get them.
It's just a matter of, again, we do have, you know, a pretty wide area in the back here, again.
And if I can, to the chair, nowadays, we've seen a lot of it. They're going from your standard delivery truck to a smaller tractor trailer.
Yeah.
Reason being is that they're trying to cut down on the amount of vehicles and fuel use. Prohibit is gonna be almost impossible.
Yeah.
If you prohibit, I mean, that'll be, I mean, some companies won't have the trucks to deliver their product. But if you do what you say you're gonna do, to show it all, then that would be.
Yeah, that fixes the issue. Yeah.
We'll take care of that.
And figuring with snow too.
Yep.
Because what you see in the dry summer is not what you have.
Correct. And you go back to 2015, I remember.
Yeah.
And then the good thing I know is, you know, Mr. Whitehead will be doing most of plowing everything.
Point of order, sorry.
So number seventeen, next one is, would be the screening for the generator and the propane tanks, which is located at the rear of the building. Again, applicant, you know, with the building in the front, you have the hill in the back of the property, we didn't feel screening was necessary, however, the applicant is willing to, again, provide some plantings if necessary, because he does want to make sure his, you know, property looks nice. And again, this was, again, just a question deferred to the board on what, if you had any opinion as to what you'd like to see for the propane in the generator.
Okay, so the quantity is off, so what is the quantity in 5.3.4?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's number fourteen.
Yeah.
That one, I don't know exactly what the number of plantings were, but I know that in the front, I think at the last meeting, I wasn't in attendance, but I'm talking to Rob, who's here for our office. I know some of the plantings in front, it was discussed to try to keep them, you know, more at a minimum for visibility and site distance issues, but I know there's still a number of trees located on the landscape plan in front of the site. And if you refer to the landscape plan that's provided, give me one second. So the landscape plan that's provided, provides, you know, a substantial number of street trees, and we tried to basically, you know, provide as many as possible on the front without, you know, impacting, I guess, you know, the view of the, the site as well.
Mr. Winnet, do you wanna?
Sure. Section 5.3.4 of the bylaw, Madam Chair, requires at least 20 feet, excuse me, shade trees planted every, at least every 35 feet. There's a couple of requirements here, but just what's important is that the planning board may authorize a reduction as, as part of their review.
Board, everyone satisfied with the landscape plan that's presented?
Are the trees in the town's right-of-way or are they on your property?
They are on our property. The right-of-way line is here.
Okay.
So the trees are set back off of, on our property.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Given those trees in the front, I'm sorry, through the chair to the, to the engineer, I know there's consideration for possibly moving the overhead wires. I was looking up the species of the, the large trees that you have here, and these things can get pretty big. Obviously, you don't want to have planted trees growing into the wires, of course, so kind of segueing into my next question without going through the review, but I'm sure we'll get to that. My consideration was, at some point, when we cover the national grid piece of this, just to, if it is going to be moved, the trees could stay. If it isn't, I'd suggest the trees are smaller in, in variety.
Yeah, and that's something, again, on landscape park, Kentucky, you could easily make that change.
Even shrubs and bushes on a nice stressed out, yeah.
Yeah, through the chair. I'd be more preference in the shrubs because where they're located, they're all in the front section and you've got that sightline with that intersection there. So I'd probably be more favorable of not having the trees there in that area. One for the overhead lines as well as the sightline.
One second.
Yeah.
Do you mean, just a safety concern if it's?
Okay.
Be a lot easier to maintain and stuff like that. And even down the road, there might be poles otherwise. If it's not done now, if other things go on and the trees can become a pain.
Yeah, I don't want to, through the chair, I don't want to see anything that's gonna interfere with the sightline there.
Yeah.
Shrubs would probably be better than trees.
Okay, so we're going to request a substitution from those trees along the frontage?
Yeah.
Along the Main Street frontage to an acceptable shrub?
Yes, something like that.
I just, I just have a question about sightline visibility. I mean, a tree, you just have the trunk, you're sitting in your car pulling out, I mean, I'm almost thinking shrubs might block more than a tree, right?
Yeah, six to one, half a dozen to the other, Ray, but.
I don't, I don't care. I want the safest, whatever is the best for the, for the town, for the site.
Yeah, through the chair, I, I wouldn't care if you planted anything out there. If you wanted to have just grass and mow it, that'd be fine. I just don't want anything that's going to interfere with the sightline distance, because it's, it's a major road, it's traffic, and people do go along at 40-plus miles an hour, so.
I couldn't agree with you more, Ray.
Yeah. If you want to keep it lawn and mow it, I'm fine with that too. I don't care if you plant anything out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like you said, all bad.
The sightline is a concern, so.
Yeah, something low. You're right, so, because you pull out in a compact car.
The salt will probably kill the flower bed, so, along the street. Just look around. So what, so board, what are we gonna do with those? So there's four trees along Main Street. Relocated?
Yes, relocated.
I, I mean, yeah, the trees on the road, I don't think.
No, yeah, no, I don't care if you plant any trees.
And then the trees near the snow storage area are probably not gonna make it either.
Well, we, we tried to move the trees all the way from the tree sto, the snow area, which would be over here, and back here, and back here.
There are the bigger ones.
Okay. These are the trees we're talking about.
There's only one on each side here in the snow storage? Yeah, they've been removed from the main snow storage area.
Right, so we can push snow all over here, because we had them lined up here, and then back here is snow storage area two, and over here on the side, we put a tree behind the dumpsters. So we're trying to stay out of the way where we push snow.
Yeah, definitely.
So, so these are the trees we're talking about for, for site. So totally happy to do whatever, grass, bushes, no trees.
Are you, are the, through the chair, are the tree, are the trees on this plan because you're trying to conform with the bylaws?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I'd say ask for a waiver on the tree planting and eliminate the trees.
It would look like a golf course if it was up to me, but conservation isn't gonna like that. They don't like grass, so.
I would say ask, ask for a waiver and.
Let's hear from.
Sure. So, through the, Madam Chair, they don't have to ask, ask for a waiver of this, this is the planning board's preference, so.
Got it.
If I can make a recommendation, that's okay with you. There's the four trees in the front, there's one right near the spillway of the first detention basin on the left, and then there's two more on the other detention basin, kind of close to the, the front. I'd recommend removal of those seven substitutions.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Right near the spillway.
Right there.
And then.
Yep.
There's also snow, yeah, the snow storages on the trees over there, right there.
Yeah, okay, so those two also?
I'd probably re, if we want to relocate them.
If they're necessary.
The, the two in the snow storage.
Relocate the two and then leave the seven?
Okay.
You don't, through the chair, I, I, you don't have to relocate them either, I'd just say do away with them. Ask for a waiver and do away with the trees.
Or the owner can plant what he would like to plant, whatever he wants to do there.
Because, I mean, if you want to relocate them, he's already got, you can't relocate them to where he's gonna do his snow removal and stuff.
Oh, no, I was saying, like, eliminate the seven and then the two in the snow storage, maybe move them to the rear or something.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Because I don't think they're gonna survive if you're storing salty snow right near there.
Okay, so do you need a location for those two or just locate them to an area of convenience?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're pretty flexible. I'm hearing, not picky on.
Not kind of be too worried about it.
Yeah, not worried about that.
But line of sight.
Yeah, safe, yeah, safe location.
Keep it low, keep the line of sight, sightline open.
Should be nine.
So there's nine.
Yeah.
Well, if you take them all, yeah, if you take all the ones out of the, it'd be ten. Not to, that tenth one, I think, the, the wires go up Rydell, right by that one too.
Yeah.
And even if we, even if we put.
So elimination of 10 trees shown on the plan dated?
Gone.
Put them up on the, if you want, put some more, put it up where your dumpsters are, in that area.
Okay.
If you want to, actually, dumpsters more up on the road, that works.
Great, so it's easy, yep, so remove those 10 trees, okay. So then number 17, related to landscaping, is the, the generator first?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. You're saying that they're being screened by the building? It's an interpretation. What?
We gotta locate it to the rear of the building here.
If the board would like to see those shielded from the traffic behind the building, I'd be happy to plant things.
Yes, let's do that.
Fine.
Since you're saving on the trees.
Yep.
So provide screening, either plantings or fence.
Number 18, note, I guess, to the existing 15-inch maple tree, you know, the intersection Rydell Road and Main Street. I know there's a note added to the planset sheet C4, that just, that will be protected so it can remain.
We will do our best to protect it, not in the way of construction.
Yeah.
If it's in the way, we're gonna give it a bit, but it is our intent to try to keep.
Okay.
It's fine.
Number 19, again, was just noted with the site lighting, that there's a small amount of spillage on towards the main road. Just again, it sounded like at the last meeting, it was agreed that was acceptable. Number 21, related to the Town and Douglas Protection bylaw, just the additional fee will be submitted.
Yep. That was an agreement, yep.
Number 24 is the next one, this is the one, I guess, I know, relating to the design of the stormwater basins. So basically, this week, the comment related to the infiltration rate that was used for the project, McCarty Engineering, based on the soil logs that were submitted, it requested we look at using a Lomi sand number, however, getting back in touch with the licensed soil evaluator, and they actually made a mistake on the forms, it is actually a sand material which has, is allows the higher infiltration rate which we used for the design, which is 8.27 inches per hour. That was confirmed, I believe, by the Board of Health Agent as well as, I think, the Leonard Engineering, and we'll submit that supporting information with our letter next one.
So I just want to be clear on that. I mean, we, we need clearance from the peer reviewer that that issue's been resolved? Or does?
Yeah, I don't have any doubt that it's sand, so.
Yeah.
And there's many witnesses, and the consultant on Monday said that they were gonna get the paperwork that we needed.
Okay, so.
So for conservation and for planning, so I.
For this board's purpose, is that issue okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I believe so.
We, we did also have a peer review engineer on site.
Yes.
We have an engineer coming tonight too.
It's just a typographical error. That is very serious.
Thankfully, it worked in our.
Yeah, yeah, right, the right direction.
So then interpreting, I guess, to number 27, was just, again, just a, again, just they had asked, we have an oil grid separator proposed, they just questioned the reference of the 400 cubic feet per acre, but that's right out of the mass stormwater manual for the design of your water separator. Number 29, I believe it was just a typo, that that label will be changed on the plan and revised. Number 36, again, was just a recommendation to have all the overflow spillways to be set at elevation 499, which is above, in both basins, is above the 100-year high watermark in each basin. So that's, will be, we'll make that provision to the plan as well.
So that's not been changed yet?
Correct, that will be on the planset we'll submit next week with our response letter.
Okay.
Number 37, yeah, number 37 relates back to number item 24, so there'll be no change related to the elevations in the basins. Number 38, again, was just, I guess, a typo, there's an incorrect label that will be fixed on the plan. Number 39 relates to, I guess, the fencing around the stormwater basins in the front. What's being proposed, I believe, there was a, I think a photo was submitted to the board, basically the split rail fencing with wire backing, it'll be four feet in height, it'll surround both stormwater basins, prevent people from accessing. I believe the engineer just was deferred to the board to make sure that was acceptable to you.
I have a question or comment on that. We discussed this, we talked about not putting a fence and grading it, and in fact, I thought we even said it was okay. And, but then we came back and Rob looked into it, like, the message I got is that the fence is required, it has to be a fence. So I want to do no fence. I like what the board, what we discussed with the board. I, I just don't know what we have to do and what we don't have to do. I want to make sure we're complying.
Who said it was required? Through the chair?
His counterpart, the gentleman who presented last time.
Right, mostly from a safety concern, he's an engineer, you know, it's a given that these will have, it's one of those things that, you know, they're both designed as dry basins, so the only time they'll have water in them is during the storm events. So an unfortunate event, the whole reason they're there would be as if for some weird reason, you have a.
The kids playing in the middle of the storm.
Yeah, which hoped it wouldn't happen, but again, just unfortunately in today's society, it's, we have to recommend.
But is it a recommendation or is it a requirement? I'm still completely.
My experience over the years has been, again, town to town, it varies. I don't believe it's in your local regulations.
No, it's not. We don't require it. It's not, it's not required.
It's not a state requirement.
Yeah.
Not that I'm.
I can under, I can understand the recommendation, we don't require fences around.
Would there be a, a pipe inlet?
Yes.
Inlet. So maybe that would be like the safety concern, so like, so, you know, kid goes down there, yeah, there's no water, but.
Yeah, we could equip those with safety grates on the flare end section so that they can't be accessed.
So the height of the proposed fence, I don't think I have the.
Four feet.
Okay.
No, 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 it's just, I just, we just discussed it differently last time, and I'm just trying to bridge that gap and, and be clear. I think it would look a lot better without it.
It's a tough one. That's one I'd rather like to see in person and have a judgment call in person, but.
Depends on the depth and pitch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really tough to tell on a diagram.
Through the chair, I, I just know we don't require in there, multiple developments in town that have basins all over them, and we've never had a requirement that said you had to put a fence up around it.
Mm-hmm, like Williams, right? Williams Court?
Yeah.
Like right on the Uxbridge line?
Cobblestone?
Even on Williams, you got the ponds there in the back?
Oh, yeah.
The bottom of the cul-de-sac, there's two of them.
Yep.
Nothing around it.
As far as deferring to the planning board, I would say we would have to defer back to your engineer that's designing it.
Yeah, I mean, just let them know it's not required. I mean, for insurance purposes, if you think you're safer with it, it's up to you, we don't require it.
May I say, take it off the plan and do without. If we felt that after it was built, there was a safety hazard and we wanted to put something up, what's the process? Do we come back to you or we?
Yeah. Or might not a modification?
May I suggest?
Mr. Winnet?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd recommend that we bounce this off public safety, especially the building commissioner or the, or the police. This is close to the right-of-way, this isn't like a subdivision where it's off the back. I, I'd recommend we get feedback from one of those two. We have an ADA and a safety officer, so I'd love to get as a feedback on that.
Yeah, the police already.
Yep, no concerns.
Yeah, no concerns.
But certainly the, the building commissioner for sure.
Yes.
I'm happy to do whatever the consensus is of all safety personnel on the board.
Yeah, did you go there for signage at all? Were they, to the safety committee for signs? Don't they have to approve new signs?
Select them.
I assume so, but I know we're also hiring a traffic engineer to design the roadway, and I thought that no parking signs and all those signs.
Yeah.
Are part of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so that'll be the game plan.
Through the chair. I know it was brought up last time about that hill down here, that, some of that, if possible, should be cut back. Are you sure that I'm cutting that?
Yes, I will. I, you know, it's the last time, I had a mental image.
Yeah.
I didn't think it impacted those, so we do need, yeah, the end of the berm down here, just level it off.
Okay, because I, I went up there a couple times, I did kind of take a look, and that would block the way it is now. It definitely does block. If that was cut back a bit.
Yeah.
You're gonna open up a lot more of your line of sight.
So if we could show that on the.
Show it on the.
Drain.
Yeah, you could show that where it is now, and then what you proposed for the cut back of that.
And that's up to two on the, for the actual road improvement design too, we'll make sure that's incorporated.
Yeah, but show, like I said, a before and the after, like do it in two different colors or whatever, so we have a good idea how it goes back. Do I move that? But I really think it's a good idea to move some of that back.
But we think it should be close to street level, probably 20 feet back or something like that.
Yeah, something like that, something that'll open up a little bit. Right now, it's, I mean, it's right there.
Yeah.
It's all straight up.
I think the curb and the road also contributes. If the road curved the other way, I don't think it's a problem.
It wouldn't be a problem. But by the way, curves, you cut that back, you're gonna open up your line of sight, so many people are out of that place, and that extra 10 feet of sight can make a big difference.
The other issue is grading so close to the lot line. So the neighboring property, you're gonna have a little.
You know what, and the lot line, I think, is right in with.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the center. So we have to be careful what we're requesting them to do, because to get a nice grade at the property line.
That would be something that we discuss with your butter and stuff, and work something else possibly.
Mm-hmm. Because it's a little bit of, I don't know how many yards is over there of gravel, of sand either. I don't know how you're gonna do that without doing a wall. If you get it to street level, 20 feet in.
Hate walls.
I know. That's, I'm gonna have to do some calculations on that.
Yeah, actually, probably, I mean, my recommendation, again, part of this part will be with the actual road design that's gonna be done for the widening.
I agree, yeah.
And part of that, we can look at, evaluate, and make sure that the sight distance works.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, don't put the cock for the horse. I mean, it all gonna work together, but that hill definitely does block your line of sight. Definitely. And I'm not gonna say it's probably illegal the way it is now, or coming around that corner with the sun and all that, that's what I'm saying, that extra 10 feet can make a difference, especially when the sun's laying right down on that road.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been that way forever because of a reason too.
Right, but now you're gonna have cars pulling in and out on that side.
I know, yeah.
And that's why that line of sight.
See how far you can take it without touching on the person's lot line.
Yeah.
We will look into that.
Considerate, yeah.
Thank you, that's it.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, I believe those were all the comments.
Okay, so yeah, you received this on Monday, so we're not quite there yet.
Through the chair, are you going to follow up with the fire chief for the fire hydrant, just to make sure if it needs to be there or not?
Yep.
Okay. I know it's across the street and there's a hydrant there, but Bernie might know, it might be a training one, I don't know.
Yep.
So just make sure it's.
And there's a basin right there, it has no fence around it.
Yes, there is.
Prime example. Okay. I forgot what I was just going to say. Board, any other questions?
Nope.
Has a decision been drafted?
No.
Okay, are we going to work on that?
If you wish.
For them to review?
If you wish.
Yes, please. Hopefully. This is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have questions or concerns regarding this 74 Main? Name and address, please. Corey? Corey Stevens? Okay. Seeing none. I will entertain a motion. Corey Stevens?
I think that's Carol.
Oh, Carol? Okay. We have. We've got 730.
I'll make a motion to continue 74 Main Street to February 24th at 7:30.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zwicker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you on the 24th.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing continued from January 27, 2022, Darkstream LLC, they are requesting a continuous to February 24, 2022 at 7:20.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Merks, seconded by Mr. Greco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Can I just mark this on, please? All right. That, that motion was continued 7:35, it is now 7:35. Public hearing continued from January 27, 2022, Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for a special permit in a definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms. Anyone presenting? Okay, come on up, name and address, please, for the record.
Steve Goven, Andrews Engineering. Last time, well, the last, the last time we were here, had discussions about this, we had three items. We had the bushes along the Abutter's property line for the granting of the waiver. So we put in the bushes, our provides, I believe we have a letter on record stating that the Abutter is in agreement with what we've proposed, and he's okay with the waiver. The second thing is, we reduced the road from, we went from 12% grade, we got down to 10% grade per the fire department's request, and at the last hearing, we got a letter stating that we could do 12% if we sprinkled the buildings, but we, there's two existing buildings up there, so we just went with the 10% grade on the road and be done with it. The third item was the access to the, to the landlocked parcel in the back, and I believe Town Council has offered an opinion that, I won't speak for him, but I think that issue has been resolved. Those are the, those are the three outstanding items that I believe we're, we're here to discuss.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I believe Town Council is on Zoom for this, if any of the members have questions regarding that easement and the determination that council made in January.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zwicker, would you like to ask any questions for our council?
Just on landlocked land. How are you doing? How is everybody? Good, how are you this evening? I've done some reading on landlocked land, where the state has gone both ways on it. I know they don't like to see it happen, but can it be explained, if possible, how it's being allowed and why?
How the back parcel was.
On any parcel of land being allowed to be landlocked, is it allowed?
It's allowed. How? If people create lots that are landlocked, they're allowed. We could, we could create, in fact, we still do, I mean, subdivisions are still created that have land, landlocked parcels that are labeled as not buildable for one reason or the other, and obviously, there's a lot of old properties in these towns where there are landlocked parcels just through quirks in subdivisions, the A and Rs, and old arcade things, it happens. Whether those properties can cobble together a way out of their landlocked parcel is a, is a second question, and it's really fact dependent as to whether they may have some kind of easement rights, but that's a separate issue, that's not a permitting issue, that's a title issue, that's a private now.
All right, thank you.
Board, do we have any questions? We have the review, January 27, 2022. Do you want to go through that review letter from Graves?
Sure.
So the, in his, his preface to the comments, he states that we went from 12% to 10% and added the visual, visual buffer along the Abutter. Starting at number four on the, on the list, his question was whether the, the road had to comply with all the subdivision regulations, meaning the slope and the grade and the horizontal, vertical curves, all that stuff. Based on what we're doing here at the residential compound, those are, those are basically waived through the, the application process of the, the residential compound. So we've, we've put in the bounds as requested a long time ago, it's got the right of way lines, it's just not an approvable public road, so it's just. Number eight, he, he was just questioning whether we were going to run underground or not, but we've got power, you know, halfway up the road already, and then services to each of the individual lots, so we're proposing just to, to run with that, not introduce any underground electric. The stormwater stuff, he didn't have any issues with, he agreed with the way we did it.
And the final revised plan date is 1/19/22?
You stamp, this one stamp 1/21/22.
Is the revision date, what's the revision date?
Yeah, it's 1/19/22.
Okay. Board, any comments?
Question to the chair.
Yep.
For all the new parcels? So everybody knows their rights for the.
Yeah, it's a homeowners association.
That'll get.
That's all.
Processed.
That's all, that's all I thought.
Okay, board, anyone else have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience have any questions? Yep, name and address, please.
Travis McCollum, I have the 48 acres that it was landlocked.
Yep.
Just wanted to, I understand that the land is landlocked, I have disputed that. I was under the impression that the board, which is like in a subdivision, where it's a bylaw in a subdivision, where the board could ask or recommend that they unlock, they unblock landlocked land, I understand that it's landlocked. And I also understand it's in the bylaws, as far as I can't come off the proposed road, which I mentioned the last few times, the easements that I suggested, but again, I don't care where the easement comes from, isn't going to touch the proposed road. So as far as in the bylaws, yeah, I understand it can't come off that, but there's other accesses besides coming off of that proposed road. So, but again, I was under the impression that the board had, could ask or recommend that they unlock land in the back.
In which section of the bylaw do you find this? And our, our council is on the line if he wants to chime in. Mr. Talman?
I don't really understand the question.
So can, can the board recommend, being that they're going for a, a compound, can the board recommend that they unblock landlocked land?
They can, they can recommend, but they can't require it. They can't require that someone grant an easement across their property for the benefit of someone else.
Okay.
Not in the, in these circumstances, in a conventional subdivision, there's a requirement for stubs so as to kind of facilitate through roads, but that's not, that's kind of antithetical to the residential subdivision, but that, this is a whole different issue, this is for the convenience of access to another property. And I'm not unsympathetic to the fact that there's a landlocked parcel here, I'm just, it's kind of a square peg in a round hole as, as it applies to what we have in front of us.
Okay. I just have another comment, if I can just use the board for a question, please. So this is what the applicant proposed in 2017, and was basically denied because of the amount of house, houses that were going in, because there were nine houses or nine lots. And with the five lots that are here, and then this little triangle piece down here with 200-foot frontage, if you look on, in the plans that they have, look at C, C 4.1, they also own this, with this frontage here, and I had a conversation with Mr. Benoit, and this was actually brought up by the woman that was here before Mr. Benoit came, was the way this is designed is opening it up for another compound possibility. So with this here, any movements of these lines here, you're making a whole new compound coming up through, which will bring them back to the nine houses, if not more. So the way this whole thing is going through, like I say, this is coming up with five, you've got a whole another one up here that's going to open up 50 acres and, and all this stuff in here, to a whole other compound. And again, with.
Can you move back? I can't see where you're pointing at.
With the whole, with the town of Douglas, again, if you're going to start doing compounds or instead of doing a subdivision, why would you do a subdivision if you could do a compound to the right, compound to the left, compound straight up, dirt roads, save you a small fortune.
Through the chairs, my understanding, once this is done, this land cannot be split again, correct?
But you're saying, you're saying the parcel that you're pointing to is not a part of this residential compound application?
Any of these parcels, any of these lot lines can be changed.
Talking about the frontage.
The frontage here?
Yes.
That's not part of the compound, that, that's not part of it, that's 200-foot frontage.
Madam Chair, so the way our regulations read is that the road cannot be extended as part of a residential compound. Through Mr. McCollum's conversation I had this morning, my, my understanding is, even if a developer or anyone in this regard wanted to petition the board for a separate residential compound, they're within their right to do so. If they were pulling back land through an A and R but maintaining status called the original approval, that's within their right, but it still would have to come back to this board one way or the other, and the board can make their determinations based on safety, welfare, density, anything like that.
I would agree.
So I don't think anything today, obviously, what's in front of us today is this, is this one item, but I don't believe, and I, again, sympathize with what Mr. McCollum is saying, but I think they're still within their right to develop alongside something, they just can't change the road in this case.
Yeah, I would agree.
I made through the chair, but if I'm not mistaken, please, correct me if I'm wrong, the agreement with the Abutter, with the upper bodies made it pretty clear that the agreement was there'd be no further development of that land. Period.
Yep.
So, does that come into play here?
It's a separate parcel. It's an adjacent parcel to the.
But would they be allowed to use that same driveway?
No.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Right, the same roadway.
Yeah.
Right. Correct.
Yeah, it'd have to be a whole other, it'd have to be another whole road.
If you do that road, they could just put another road coming up and, and basically going back to the lots that they had 2017, because they're not.
Can't extend off of it.
Sorry.
Through the, through the chair, they can't extend off of it, once the roadway's been established with this plan, it's, I mean, initially, they came in with, you know, nine lots with a subdivision, and, you know, at that time, our board said, you know, why don't you revisit this and see, because of the infrastructure costs and stuff like that, and they did that, and they came back with a more reasonable plan, five lots, and this is all allowed under our regs, and it's a one-time, you know, and doesn't sit.
For those parcels, it's not like a reduced frontage lots where you can do up to two and that's it, adjacent.
Right, so in other words, it's the same, the same parcel, this is also one parcel until it gets subdivided, and then again, the rest of the one parcel could be subdivided again.
I don't believe that parcel that you're pointing to, it would be the map 109, no, yeah, 109 Lot 1, is not part of this application.
Is this little triangle thing?
The, no, the, the 200-foot frontage.
That's 200-foot frontage.
Yeah. Do, do you want to walk us through the, just the parcels? What the concern is? So the parcel that he's pointing at is not part of this application, correct?
There is one parcel that's not part of this application, creating a parcel A with the 200-foot frontage, a possibility to combine the parcel that's not included in this application, and the parcel that could create a frontage off of the road.
Yeah, so we're doing an A and R.
Even if we came in for a second one, we don't meet the 10 contiguous acres or whatever it is, 100 feet, well, there's 100 feet of frontage there, but we don't meet the common ownership, there's a lot of things that don't apply to, if we came in for another residential compound, it doesn't meet those requirements right from, right from the start.
So that.
Simply just the frontage lot.
Yeah, so that parcel is a part of this application.
Parcel A is being broken off.
Yes.
Because we, we still have in excess of the 100-foot requirement.
300 plus.
-for front to come in and do this. And my understanding is that once this is approved, those lot lines can stay there. They can't be further subdivided. So adding that parcel, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong.
Absolutely.
But he's saying if we take this parcel and we take this parcel, then we can get into the back here, but we can't touch this.
Okay.
Because it's part of this residential compound.
Yeah.
So probably three meetings ago, Aaron sat here and said, "Show me what you want to do in the future, today, tomorrow, yesterday." And that's what we have here, is revised all the lots. We've got five lots as part of the residential compound. Then we've got that, and this other parcel here to, in the future, maybe combined with this to create a frontage lot. But we cannot touch this back parcel lot.
These lot lines can be altered after this is all done.
No.
Point of order.
Um, sorry, point of- We're going to be proper here tonight. Thank you. Mr. Benoit, do you want to?
Just direct all questions through the chair.
Yeah, direct questions through the chair, please.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I had a conversation with Mr. Benoit today. From what he told me, lot lines can be altered after this is done. So you could alter this lot line down, you could alter this lot line over, you could alter this lot line over here and make an access right up through.
But the project is involving those parcels of land. So once the project is approved, those are set in stone. And the A and R lot is set in stone. Unless it comes in with a new A and R plan. But the other, the other land, yes, do you want to?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
It says that no, that shall be no further subdivided.
For the residential compound land.
Right, but we couldn't subdivide this land to add to this land.
No, you can't.
We could change this lot line between these two internally, sure. But we can't change this to add to this. It's in the bylaw.
So, does the TOJ know on that aspect, is that something that- If it's on the deed where the lot lines can no further be subdivided.
Um, Mr. Talman, do you want to weigh in?
So what, what is the, what is the, the exact question here?
Yeah. Mr. Talman, the, a better Mr. McCollum is, is asking if the backland of any of these divided residential compound lots could then be combined through common ownership, so long as it meets the requirement of a lot size. For example, if there's a four-acre lot, could it be reduced to two acres even if it's not affecting the frontage or any other buildable lot within the roadway? He's curious if the backland could be combined and then created into a separate residential compound. So the question really is, even though you're not changing the number of houses on the driveway, could you alter the backland to create more space for further development off of a different roadway?
Um, so the language, if I am looking at it here, not more than one RCP subdivision shall be created from a property or a set of contiguous properties held in common, common ownership as of May 26, 2009. So it's more the first part of it. So can another RCP subdivision be created? No, but by use of some of this property, I would think, could some of this property be divided off through some kind of endorsed A and R or other land and combined with other property to create something that's more accessible and buildable? I think it's possible, would require an amendment to this subdivision, though. You're analyzing this as-is for all of this property. If someone wants to change the, um, the backland, so to speak, then that's going to require, you're considering the merits of this with the land as you see it. Could it be amended? I suppose it could, so long as there's not another RCP developed out of any portion of this property.
There you go.
So they can't, so on the record, there cannot be another compound on this entire property? On the record.
Well, I don't know what you're pointing at, because it's a little small.
Anything that is, all the land that's involving the residential compound that we're approving, yes.
Says not more than one RCP shall be created from a property. It doesn't say a portion of or the whole of. So if you're using some of this land to help satisfy a minimum for another property, then that's, um, that's probably not allowed. If people wanted to take some of this property and then, and combine it with another property and then create two, um, and I don't know if they were held in common ownership as of May 26, 2009, I'm assuming not, and create two RCP subdivisions, I suppose they could do it, but it would have to be done before this is divided here. And they would have to start anew with this one. You follow?
Yeah.
It's a sequencing thing, if I'm understanding the, the question correctly.
Very good.
Okay, as long as, yeah, as long as that's clarified, as far as it can't be another, like I say, coming up and off, and a whole nother compound up there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone online, questions, concerns regarding this hearing? Okay, um, there is one waiver requested for the buffer. Do we want to discuss that? Do we want to vote on that? Well, I think, um-
Through the chair, do we have the draft decision?
No.
Okay. I'm going to keep it open. Yep.
On the letter, I understand it all, I'd just like to see a signature. You know, it says, sent from my phone.
Yes.
Madam Chair, emails considered written, communication.
Thank you.
It is valid, it is stamped by the clerk as well.
Yeah, and from the last time he was here.
Okay.
He was here.
Yeah.
All right.
It did say that letter, sorry.
I guess you wanted to know on that aspect of it.
Yep.
Normally, there's a signature.
Um, so there's one waiver, did you want to say?
I, through the chair to Mr. Stevens, you kind of mentioned draft decision, whether or not we should keep the hearing open until then. I believe the board, if it feels that it's willing, could vote this evening and then wait for the draft decision at the next hearing.
Yes, as long as it doesn't get stamped in with the town clerk before the applicant reviews.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the waiver requested.
What exactly is a waiver, just so I can-
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept or approve the waiver as requested for Section 4.3, um, point seven, the buffer zone not less than 30 feet in width of, uh, separating common private, uh, way.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Schultzberg.
Second that.
Seconded by Mr. Stevens. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, um, anyone want to discuss any conditions for the approval? So we have, um, special permit and definitive subdivision residential compound.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
The special permit is for reduced frontage. So as far as order of operations, if the board were to consider their vote on the special permit prior to the definitive subdivision.
Okay.
Special permit is just to reduce frontage from 100 feet to the 50 feet. And I believe they're only showing that on one lot in this plan.
Okay. What, what is it for 50 feet?
Yep.
Okay. And also, the A and R is not being formed with this plan?
Correct.
Okay, so they're coming in with a new plan?
If they, if they do.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, didn't do the combo. All right, I'll entertain a motion on the special permit for reduced frontage for the one lot.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion for the approval for the definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms.
So moved.
Motion's made, what?
Pardon, point of order, I'm more specific on the movement of that motion. Sorry. Recommended, if you're voting approval, it'd be a motion to approve with-
Oh, I, a motion to approve the Hawk Hill Farms definitive subdivision.
With condition.
With condition.
Thank you.
Just, just a point of clarity?
Yeah.
Should we, are we closing the public hearing? Should we close the public hearing first? Should we close the public hearing? Are we just, yeah?
Sure.
Okay, well, we already started voting, so, all right, so Jake made a-
Mr. Schultzberg.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Schultzberg.
Mr. Stevens made a second.
And seconded, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Schultzberg, second, Mr. Marx. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Sorry, okay, you're all set.
Madam Chair, may I address the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you. So I will have a draft decision prepared for the next meeting for board signature.
Already sleeping.
Congratulations. So we'll have that ready. Um, I'll share it with you prior to the board signatures so we can agree on the language, also share with town council as well.
I just want to say thank you to Jay for the input.
Yes.
You dropping now?
Thank-
Not yet.
Oh, he's still here.
Thanks, Jay.
This is a 2014 job, so thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. I would just like it on the record that that was the first time the gallows used to shut up.
You're special. Oh, yeah, later. Okay, additional business, pine, sand and stone, earth removal, special, or earth removal permit extension for Area E, possible votes.
Madam Chair, may I, may I please request to move up additional business item C since town council is here, 61A First Right of Refusal on the Oak Street property?
Okay, sure, I thought it was, um, it's, well, I guess he can tell us. I thought it was not a first refusal, I thought it was a notice of a change of use.
Through the chair, I will refuse myself.
Okay. Mr. Talman?
Yes?
Um, Mr. Benoit wanted your opinion on this notice for the intent to convert to other use for the 61A land.
Yep.
I thought it was just a, a notice given that there's no formal vote needed.
Well, there's, there's no vote from your board anyway. You would just make an recommendation. If the notice of conversion does trigger the select board's right of first refusal, if it's on your agenda, you get notice of it. If it's on your agenda, it's for the purpose of considering the, the value of it, the merits of how the select board may choose to act on it. Ultimately, only the select board can decide to move forward with scheduling the required hearing, getting the appraisal, and exercise the right of first refusal.
Okay.
Just through the chair, question for you, Jay. If the property is being leased and it's not being sold, what is your option?
This is a, this is a conversion, so there's, there's two ways to write a first refusal is triggered. The first is with a sale, where we would have to match the price of that's in a purchase and sale agreement. The second is with respect to a conversion. It could be a conversion and a lease, it's just a change of use.
Okay.
When those things happen, the right of first refusal is triggered as well. And to determine the price, we would get an appraisal. And then, um, and then they could get an appraisal, and then there could be a third appraisal, but that's how it's set. So there's, there's two ways of, at which a property that's under a chaff or land restriction can become available to the town under the right of first refusal.
Okay, did not have all this paperwork on Monday, conservation. Okay. So board, what are we recommending to the board of selectmen?
If anything.
If anything. Do you want to get some appraisals on purchased property? Do you think the town should do that?
No, I don't recommend.
I'll take a formal motion. To not rec, no, you're supposed to go away from the table also. You're supposed to be out of the-
Am I allowed to ask a question?
No.
Not an open hearing.
It's not a hearing, it's discussion. And you need to be back a little bit further from the table.
So, so I would, I would not recommend the, um-
Yeah, make, you make a motion, make a motion to not recommend.
Not recommend the first right of refusal on-
Yeah, the right of refus-
Motion made by Mr. Stevens.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marx. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Talman.
You're welcome.
For clarifying that. Probably should make a new vote at conservation. I only had one piece of paper on Monday. Okay, thank you. Okay, you're back. Okay. Great, all right, back to additional business, pine, sand and stone, earth removal permit extension for Area E. Okay, what do we have in our pocket? Name and address.
Our reversal, pine, sand and stone, one likely damn row. What I provided for you, the board, good evening.
Good evening.
This is a, uh, fourth plan. It's an intermediate as well of the property which we are hoping to, um, renew, but extend the permit, the existing permit. Because we are, have not reached the finished grade yet. So we'd like another, we request another year, uh, under the existing permit.
Mr. Benoit?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So having reviewed the document, my big concern was making sure that the bond was continued to be valid and was not expired. It is still valid and looks to be extended already in anticipation of the board's hopeful vote this evening. I'm seeing any issues as the project continues to move forward. I recommend a favorable vote on the board.
Okay. Board, anyone else, comments, questions? I think everything's in order. So I'll entertain a motion to extend this permit for Area E for one year.
From, from the state? One year from the state, or did you?
Um, March 11.
March 11.
March 11.
2022.
Also move on that?
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's going to leave some practice. I could do my fair, right? Is that allowed? So next item is JMT Sleepy Hollow closed, earth removal permit and bond release, possible votes.
Yes, uh, I believe in 2020, we actually finished up the project, but we never actually formally asked to release the bond from the earth removal special permit. We would like to do tonight.
Okay, Mr. Benoit?
Madam Chair, thank you. So I did verify that, I watched some of their meeting videos, Mr. Marx's chair. All right, uh, this was, uh, April 2020. There were several meetings with the, with the town engineer and, uh, Mr. Leonard from Pine, Sand and Stone. And it was clear when the minutes in the video that the board was satisfied with the work at that time. This, this is just, um, more of a formality at this point, but one of the things I wanted to verify before the board considers releasing a bond of such a large amount as $150,000 is making sure that the definitive subdivision bond itself and completion of the roadway was still in fact intact. The bond is with our treasurer-collector, however, the bond was never recorded. So we do have the money, but the document was not, was not recorded at the registry. So what I do have is the original in the signature folder, the asking for a, a late signature from Mr. Marx's chairperson of that time.
Okay.
So we can get that recorded and on record. But since we actually hold the bond already, which is, which is good news, I don't see an issue with, with, um, closing out this earth removal permit and releasing the bond for $150,000.
So, through the chair.
It was a wild time.
Yeah, it was.
In 2020, April.
All right, so, so they were trying to combine the earth removal and the subdivision as one project. So i- is it just one bond, I mean, just two? Okay, so I, I didn't hear what you said clearly. So we're releasing the earth removal permit bond, but we're keeping the bond for the roadway and all that.
Correct.
Okay. Also, and part of this, and I'm not sure what the product was under, was the looping of the water line from the end of the subdivision to Route 16. Has that been done yet?
Long time ago.
Yeah. Over a year, maybe.
Year and a half.
Yeah, that's, that's, okay, I wasn't sure if it was, it's all, it's all done and complete.
Yeah, we jacked underneath the stream there.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right, thank you.
So you need a motion to release the earth removal.
Earth removal.
Bond, which is being held by the town of Douglas.
And close out the permit.
Is the amount exactly 150,000?
Yes.
For that exact amount of $150,000.
Motion made, and close out the...
And close out the...
Earth removal permit. Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Schulzberg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Ernie, I mean, Mr. Marx, you've got to put your signature on that, and Mr. Benoit will notarize it for you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, I was the chair at the time, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, right there, oh, okay.
Thank you.
You want today's date?
Thank you, have a good night.
Today's date, Matt?
Yes, that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
Thankfully, all the notaries on that document were still valid for the other signatures.
10th today?
It's the 10th, yeah.
Okay, just going back to you?
Sure.
We've got town meeting zoning bylaw review considerations. Do we want to go into that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One thing that we've got, I passed it around to everyone and I buried my own.
I don't have it.
Ultimately, and Ms. Kogelinski is here, and she's going to be able to help me with this in just a moment, Madam Chair, but the Economic Development Committee voted last evening to recommend to the board that we consider striking a section of our bylaw. This kind of came to be based on our conversations with the Blackstone Valley Warehouse and Distribution Center when we were talking about the earth removal permit with them. Now this being, the section, that excavation shall be made at less than 10 feet above the annual high water table. So based on that recommendation, this came in yesterday, the first thing I want to say is I certainly thank Ms. Kogelinski for bringing this to our attention. One thing I still want to do is vet this with the Water District, of course, so I'm not expecting an action this evening, but I'd like to keep this on our radar for consideration of annual town meeting. Without further ado, though, I think, Madam Chair, that we should hear from Ms. Kogelinski further.
Thank you. You're on.
Can I say something about that?
Yep, you have the floor. Name and address, please, for the record.
Cal, Cal, Auburn, 250 High Line Road. This actually pin, my, I noticed that I was watching when you were reviewing the project down here on Lucky Dam Road, the three town section. But, you know, Sutton does not have this, and either does Oxbridge, but we have a map by law, but I'm going to tell you how it's got to be. If you look at it, you probably think that this is something very important, some very smart person, somebody, some engineer, or some conservation, or some water person, but I'm going to tell you how it actually happened because I was involved when it was put in. We was working on our zone, and there were two people who were going, we just got a stop to dirt removal. We just got a stop to dirt removal, is what they were saying. This is terrible, we're taking all the dirt out, their land isn't going to be worth anything, it's going to be worthless, the town is going to end up, they're going to stop paying taxes on it, the town is going to end up taking up the bad taxes, nobody's going to buy it, it's going to be worthless. So anyway, I said, well, you know what, if we don't let them go within 10 feet, either they're going to pay for it, or they're selling it, or they're selling it, so that's made everybody happy, and that's how they come in, okay? So I think now we know, we don't have to worry about that land being worthless. They're going to go see the brownies, they're selling for more money than anything. There is, it's all humility, humility. So I think, you know, I think this is going to affect that someone who's trying to put in a block, so, yeah, because they're going to take that hill down, and it just, basically, it's not needed, other towns don't have it, if we put in there to keep people happy, if we weren't going to end up with a lot of worthless claims, but we all know now, years later, that's not going to happen. So that's all we have to say on that situation.
Okay, Mr. Benoit?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So I sympathize with this, I think I understand where Ms. Kogelinski's coming from. I just want to make sure we vet this with the Water Department and just make sure it's not a concern for our acrofer, for whatever reason. That's, I just want to make sure our hands-on water professionals actually take a look at it first.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any state regs?
Uh-uh.
No. This is left to each town?
You can make a cranberry bog.
I know, I'm just asking. That's one of those deals where, is there, this is just on the town decision?
It appears to be. I haven't done much research on that separation.
Can, if possible, can we get a consensus? I know we're talking about Oxbridge and Sutton, but about, what is Oxford, Auburn, Blackstone, some other local?
Yeah, any.
Any even opinion from an engineer?
Yeah, any negative.
But it'd be good to have, instead of just two towns, how about surrounding towns? What is the general consensus? When, because we know there's industrial parks in Oxford, in Auburn, in other areas, what is the general view on some of this?
And any impacts, environmental impacts to groundwater?
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes.
Douglas sits on a huge acrofer, a good part of its acrofer, and our wells are, wells not pond water, not reservoirs, they're wells, and the protection of those wells starts with above groundwater. So the reason probably it was implemented, if I can remember correctly, was we wanted to protect our water supply, and I think if we're going to consider going above the 10-foot threshold, then we should get some information from...
Someone, yeah.
Someone that understands that.
But, that being said, you can put in houses within the groundwater, essentially. So if you bring it down 10 feet and then you're doing incidental foundations, you can remove that anyway.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, you know, I'm sure there's some negative effects just to leave it wide open and be, you know, at groundwater, at the bottom, but if there's future development, which I'm sure there would be, that's allowable.
You're talking reseptics system, things like that, then?
Let's just say it got down that far, but say you've got it at 6 feet instead of 10 feet.
Yeah, I mean, I just...
So you have your separation from high groundwater, and then you can put in residential.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure where the 10-foot threshold came from exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, I just want to make sure that we, if we do something like that, that we know what we're doing.
Process, I mean, you've got earth removal happening in commercial and industrial that's not allowing residential, so that's one consideration.
Right.
Also, we don't have a lot of sewer, but maybe we'll get sewer in the future, so that's another consideration. I think we can look at it, I hate to say this, but decreasing the 10-foot, but I'm not sure...
Certain districts, certain zones, stuff like that, yeah, but I can't see a general decrease it everywhere type of bylaw.
Well, remove it, I'm not sure that that, that seems to be...
No, I don't want to remove it.
And I would want some support. Yes?
You may, you see something?
Yes.
I think that anything that is in the acrofer gives you a whole lot of more, I mean, you have a lot of control over anything in the acrofer. So I mean, that's, that's a concern, there's a lot of wells here, and that's all in the acrofer, and I think you have, you know, all kind of control of that.
It's something to really consider.
And just can't really...
Environmentally sensitive areas that we have here, and I don't think anytime soon we're going to be getting all town water, so if something negative does happen, we're, it's going to be more trouble than it's worth to, you know, if there's contamination occurring and...
Yeah, you have a huge amount of residents on wells, so you can't just go...
If you're in a gravel pit, it's moving fast and...
The bylaw says that the board has the right to adjust the depth of the excavation based upon monitoring information. So we, we have, I mean, we just did it for that complex down here on Lucky Dam Road.
I think historically, we've held it for the last 20 years.
We have, that's the first that I can, that's the first that I can ever remember.
Yes.
I mean, I spoke on it that night, so, but I, just generally eliminating it, I, I don't like that idea at all. I can see working with companies that want to come in and growth coming up, but...
Maybe we clarify our regulations or a policy or something to ensure that we, that the applicants know that there's some flexibility there.
Right.
Because I think historically, if you look at our track record, we've never done it.
No, that's, like I said, that's the first time.
People that were running the department.
That was the first time I ever remember doing it.
Through the chair, and I know it's an early, but like I said, Auburn and Oxford and all that, here again, they have a lot of water supply.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Douglas is the other way around. We have a very small amount of water supply. We're all wells. I mean, once you get on Main Street, everything is on wells in the towns.
So just through the chair, so I know, I know Webster doesn't have this, coming from there, planning board, but Sutton's very similar to us, and they don't have it. I think it's going to be best to maybe have Bob Sullivan study it, if a lot, have them, you know, back with some, as well as some other experts.
As well. Yeah, I think we have to put some thought into it, but it's a good idea.
Worthwhile.
Mrs. Kogelinski, anything else?
No, just, no, I just wanted to let you know how it was put in, and so that you know that it wasn't really put in by an engineer.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Carol.
It's hard to go backwards, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay, moving on, are we going to, this one? No?
Sure.
How long do you want to be here for?
We have many. There's a couple new ones.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, as mentioned at our previous meeting, and I know some of our members were absent, I was really just looking for board member feedback on the 55-plus residential bylaw, even if it's written oral, I just want to collect the board's feedback before we really start diving into that. I want to get the pulse of the board on this type of bylaw.
All right, can everyone mark up their copy? No, you, you're not going to? Not right now, for next meeting. Oh, I don't have a pen here, you want to share my pencil? Yeah, it goes with the book. Okay. Mr. Benoit, do you want to start anywhere, or do you want to, you want us to look at these and mark up the comments and submit them back to you? Okay.
Unless members have comments already?
I would prefer if we just marked. Do you have comments?
I've got comments ready. So just to the board, to the chair.
We'll do four minutes of this, okay?
Yeah, so what I recommended, don't have mine, I got to talk. What I recommended to our community development director was to, I think our flexible development bylaw is well-written, and then what I mentioned to him was doing an extension off of that for the 55 and older, because I think that's, that incorporates a lot of what's in here. It incorporates the buffer, it incorporates open space, it incorporates everything else. And I think we just need to add in something where we're eliminating a single-family four-bedroom house for, you know, two duplexes.
Yeah, and also excluding the affordable housing and making it the 55.
Making it 55.
Right? There's no affordable housing requirement in here.
Correct. And there was, and there was another, yeah.
So you could almost substitute the, the affordable housing with the 55-plus restriction and just do the same exact, as the flexible development.
Sure. I think that would help streamline things a little easier. I also just, as long as the 55 and older meets the Title V requirements, you know, you're eliminating, you know, you don't need a two-acre lot if it's grandma and grandpa. I don't care, you know.
Well...
Again, it's a, it's a community. It's a community being developed.
You can never, it's, that's a separate issue. It has to be approved by the board to help. So I like that, rather than starting a brand-new one, and that has any combination of single-family, duplex, residential. Now, does this have, this doesn't really have that bonus lot situation, though. The calculation of the back, basic max number, proof plan depicting 10 buildable lots, and then how do you get the extras? With the reduced frontage. Is there, is there bonus lots in this? Huh? No? Okay. So I guess we have to think about that. Because they are requiring the buffer area, but you're not really getting anything. You could do the 10 lots. This is maximum 10 lots?
This was minimum, wasn't it?
Minimum?
I think it was minimum 10 lots.
Well, there's a proof.
Yeah. I, I think if it goes in, say...
Proof plan, minimum 10.
Yeah. Like, like how the flex is written is, is that you show a conventional subdivision, that gives you your base number, and then from there, if you want to shrink it down and create the open space, because it's based off of a conventional subdivision.
Yeah, that's what it says, developed upon the site under a conventional plan with all the applicable requirements. Oh, here's a good sentence, too. This, do you mind sharing which town this was from?
I did not assemble this.
Oh, okay. And without the proposal of extraordinary engineering design measures. So you've got that word, and you've got reasonably, readily available. That's another one that I, it's... How, how do you get, what, what's the positive on this? What's the plus? Is the reduced size of the lots? Oh, if the proposed development includes a request for a reduction of lot size and/or frontage requirements, the following shall apply. Okay, so that's the hook. Yes?
On the age restrictions, these are all individual houses, but...
Or duplexes.
Okay, so, the question I have is this, if I own a house and 60 is old, I pass away.
It's deed restricted.
Uh-huh.
It's deed restricted.
I'm paying cash for a house.
It's deed restricted.
But the idea is, is, so what you're doing then is, when you do this, I understand, Sutton goes on or an estate requires a house, which they would, and they can't find anybody to buy it, that's 55 and all. So now you're making them stuck with that residence.
Well, you also, you also have to take the side of this.
I mean, finance, that's a legitimate, I mean, right now, we're in a housing boom, but there was a while years ago, and you worked maybe around when that happened, you couldn't give away a house.
I know.
So the idea is, is you're forcing a hand on somebody.
That's the deal.
It's, it's the community that it's in. So to be fair, Mike, if there's 20 homes in there, and you want to be around people of your own age and not, you know, and the grandkids come over and visit, you know, for a few hours and they go, but again, it's a community, it's a 55-year-old community, usually with a clubhouse, they're very big in a lot of other states, okay, and they're, they're starting to migrate up here where you see a lot more.
Down south where it's warm. It's polar bear appear.
Correct.
That's where I'm going.
But, but some, some, some polar bears don't want to go down south to retire.
It's like, okay, there is, show me proof of another one in this area that's working.
Summerfield.
Oxbridge.
Auburn.
Oxbridge has one, yeah.
Yep, there are a couple of them.
Yeah, I believe there's one on.
Right off of Quarry Hill, isn't it?
Well, there's one across, there's one on Douglas Road, off of Douglas Road, Route 16.
Are they individual houses or?
No, they're duplexes.
Duplexes?
Yeah.
And there's, there's a few other ones in other towns. I know there's one by a golf course and stuff like that, it'd be the name of the town. But again, that's the whole idea with the community, you know what I mean? Because.
So what if, so what if we put this in the flexible development bylaw?
Yep.
As a, an additional section to the affordable housing requirement.
Well, yeah, you mentioned affordable housing. I mean, most of these age over 55 communities are not affordable housing communities. They're not, they're not cheap. You're paying big bucks to live there.
Yeah, you would use the guidelines of the flexible development bylaw that we have in place and we add the alternative method for development, the same kind of way that you do the base max number, excluding the requirement for the affordable portion. And it's got to be 100% 55-plus, age-restricted.
Right.
It's not going to be mixture.
Yeah, okay.
And it's not going to be a mixture of, well, I don't know, a mixture of types. I'm just.
I think, I think you're spot-on. The only question I would have for the board is, if you did a 55 and older, should there be a percentage of that as well as when you do a flex as a percentage of that, that's affordable?
No, no.
It's the appetite of the board, that's all.
Yeah, that's my, that's my opinion. Is no.
You keep it all the same.
Correct, but I'm saying that you could have a 55-year-old someone that wanted an affordable unit. And that option's not there.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I believe there might be.
They still have to meet the rules and regs for the 55.
For affordability component. I believe there's a state mandate for a percentage. I'll double-check that.
It's 10% per town, I think, or 8 or 10%.
Well, right.
We're not meeting the threshold.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is, for anything that's 55-plus or 62-plus, there's a percentage of that that has to be remaining affordable. I'm pretty sure there's a mandate on that. I just want to verify.
Really?
Yeah.
Pretty sure.
Oh.
If you could.
I didn't, oh.
Then that, then that takes it out of our hands and it would be.
I've seen it in a couple of different places. I just don't know if it's a preference of a town or a state mandate. I just want to double-check.
Oh, okay. All right. So I think probably we should, we should just approach it because we are used, I mean, we didn't do too many flexible developments. We only, I think, did two in the whole time that we've had the bylaw. But I think we've worked out the kinks and maybe do some minor edits to that bylaw.
Yeah.
Instead of recreating the wheel with a separate section.
Which I agree.
The method to. Yeah.
We could get some input. I mean, Oxbridge must have a bylaw, so we could, you know.
And that must work and we can, you know.
They've got a couple of them, I know.
Drive through those. That's about four minutes away from here.
So the amount of adding a few lines instead of reinventing a wheel.
Right.
Yeah.
For clarity on certain aspects of the law.
Just another option.
Right, I, I, I mean, I'd be on the board then.
I mean, there's a lot of restrictions with it. I mean, you're right. You can't, no kids, you can't have families. Your kids can only come and visit, there's so many days they can stay and then they have to leave. There's a lot of restrictions with the 55 community.
And they are, they watch you.
Yes.
See, they, some of them measure.
And the extra car, everybody's.
Re-park your car and everything.
Yep, yep.
Madam Chair, one more thing to say about that. That's okay. I just want to get this out there now. One of the things we need to consider for these is a mandate that the homeowner association documents are in hand and recorded prior to a certain point in the stage of development. The town of Auburn had a 200-home 55-plus community, never recorded their HOA in advance. So all of those deed restrictions?
Were not restricted.
Right. So that's one of those conditions that we have to make part of this regulation, or else that can happen.
Okay, write that down.
I have. I've committed that to memory.
Is, just through the chair, should that also be on the covenants as well?
Of course.
So do we request that prior to the building permit being issued?
Yes.
You know what I mean? Because I think that just protects.
Yeah, that's reasonable, yeah.
Prior to lot release.
And us also.
Yep, okay. There you go. Good job.
Now, on, it was chair on or off the subject about a contract law. On the conditions that being filed, placed out, projects going on, that's the same conditions that we've all agreed to act beforehand, right? Or have they been tweaked at all?
What was that like?
Well, I believe you used a different template, but yeah, the typical.
Because over the years, we've discussed things on our conditions, our template, I'm going to say. That template's still the same? If not, I'd like to see if it's still the same template.
Yes, I, through the chair, love to make some modifications to it, but it doesn't appear to have changed yet.
Okay, so, which is great. And I'm saying, we've all been on the board long enough.
Yeah.
Where we always called it a living template. Things would change, ideas would come in, conditions. Like we, I think, discussed on the Sutton, on the tri-town one, about pouring of concrete 24 hours a day. Reason being is these big projects, once they start, they can't stop. By what we have, you can't do that. So we agreed on that with proper notification on, I think, with the planning board and the police department.
Yeah.
To let them know, hey, we're doing a two-day pour or whatever. Things like that could be put into that condition and it would either apply or not apply depending on the project. So if any tweak is, you know, I mean, these are the evenings and time when that should be brought up and discussed and changed on the spot or thought of.
Madam Chair, recommendation, something I've always done, as long as I've been doing this, is I've had a laminated set of standard conditions for boys to review and to consider for approval of any application. For example, you make a motion and you ask for conditions 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, and just choose the ones that are applicable to that particular project. So if I add a list of standard conditions, like we already have in a lot of our special permit decisions, we pull those templates out, we can make those calls right at the meeting table. That seems to be kind of the direction you're heading.
Yeah, exactly. That, it's kind of, a lot of it's kind of.
But I think the drafter of the decision, you know, Jake made the motion, Mr. Scholesberg made the motion, my vice chair, made the motion with conditions and I think that's why we like to review.
Yes.
So I think the template is good, but we might miss something too when we're voting. So that's, I like the, just with conditions.
Yes.
And then if there's something not applicable, then we take it out versus finding what's missing.
Either way.
Yeah, I mean, I prefer that because it's kind of what we're used to. But we can change, doesn't mean that we can't change. I think when there's specific conditions, you know, in addition to our usual conditions, we say A, B, C. I think that clarifies for the applicant when there's something like the concrete pouring.
Very well.
Yeah, thinking of that nature. I mean, with some of the projects coming up, hopefully, there might need to be, like you say, additions and substitutions.
Yeah, just to be all-encompassing and then have some flexibility to add things.
Well, like you're saying, we have the standard format that we can look at and say, okay.
Yeah, he's using the same one, yeah.
The rest will change seven.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Very well, much to have.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, you want to do the solar next?
Sure.
It's very hefty.
I.
There's, there's too many words.
I did not propose this. I remember that this board worked on a nice little tidy one for not so long ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mr. Benoit has now weighed in with.
You wrote all these words?
For the most part.
Eight pages here.
Madam Chair, may I introduce this one?
Sure.
So the state has a template on solar regulations. They gave towns, when this first really all started within the last decade or so, towns were scrambling. They weren't sure what to do. Forests were being leveled, solar was going up. So the state came up with a template for towns to use. One that I kind of ripped apart with the town of Auburn and formed a, what I feel is a very strong solar bylaw. This template is mostly from Auburn that I worked on for a long time with the community. I repurposed this for the town of Douglas, added some comments from both the fire department and the building department, regulating battery storage, lock boxes at the gates for emergency vehicle access. But ultimately, you know, with the current bylaw that we have, and I understand it's short and sweet, it essentially is just a use table and gives you special permit requirements based on our regular special permit criteria. And that's fine, but there's a lot of components of solar that are, that are missed today and with our solar projects today that have issues with stormwater, overhead lines, transformers on stite, transformers in the roadway, right-of-ways, scenic roads. There's a lot of variables here, especially battery storage hazards, materials. So this bylaw covers a lot of that. And this has been accepted as a standard in many communities because it's based on the regulations from the state. I just want to introduce this to you because we're coming up on the summer. Solar's big there. Takes up a lot of space, takes down a lot of trees. And personally, just my, my opinion is, these should be on areas that are already cleared, landfills, farms, fields, such. This regulation does not specify where they're supposed to be located, but this would regulate them a lot better than what we have now.
Okay.
So. Just opportunity to digest and feedback at the next meeting.
Just for, I think the only concern that we ever had with solar was, we didn't want the residential people looking to put solar on their house or in their backyard, as long as it was in their building envelope, to trigger a site plan review for additional fees and engineering and things like that. That was the concern of the board back then. Reading through this, as long as that doesn't trigger here, I understand most of what this is is updating to where we are in 2020 related to the standards of solar and putting a little more garbage around the site control and the approval process. So I don't have concern with what I've read so far into this stuff. So that's all I can say.
Through the chair, Mr. Stevens. I did replicate what was in our regulations for the size, that being the residential scale, the commercial scale. I used the same threshold that you already had in your regulations, so I kept that the same. Auburn's was a lot different as far as size. They had three different, it was small, medium, and large. I liked what you guys had, just to call one large and keep the small one separate. So I kept that the same.
Yeah, you've got applicability at 6.8, 0.2, 0.1, saying not, do not need to comply with this section, but require a building permit.
Right.
So, yeah.
This is mostly for the large commercials.
Yeah.
Through the chair.
Yep.
On this, on 6.8.13, on decommissioning, a couple of questions if you don't mind. We haven't brought this up at all on all these projects. You have a 20-year term, so they keep the power on till a week before the 20 years is up. 20 years come by and they say, ah, we're all done. We're no longer on the land. The lease is up. But all the property is still standing. Do we require, I see here, you say 180 days before they turn it off. But, or they don't turn it off till the very end. Now, I want to say, whether it's right or wrong here, we're changing our 61A here to commercial from farmland. All of a sudden, all that 20 years that go back to farmland, the terms are up, the lease is up, property's still on the, up there. What happens? Who's responsible?
We need enough money to decommission it and the decommission bond.
But that's, but what I'm getting at is, is there, as these years go on, just inflation in this past year, every piece of bond we have should be up over 25% then for what it costs to do stuff right now. Is that adjustment being looked at every year and tweaked?
I don't think it's every year.
And also, I don't see here anything about poles. Says physical removal of lines.
Yeah.
Says nothing about the removal of poles.
Yeah, it says the amount shall include a mechanism for calculating increased removal costs due to inflation. And the owner shall increase or replenish the surety as necessary to maintain an adequate amount as determined by the planning board.
But what I'm getting at is, if National Grid puts in the poles, what kind of binding do we have with National Grid to pull those poles out?
So the.
I might not any.
See where I'm going here? So we have National Grid or EverSource running the poles, a half mile on somebody's property.
So, so just through the chair, your point with the related to the poles. So National Grid can come in and drop poles on my property and stuff like that to install the poles, to feed the power and stuff like that. If the power's disconnected off the array, the array's, you know, goes offline, dead. The responsibility, National Grid's not going to come in and pull the poles out. It's a responsibility of the homeowner or in the decommissioning bond.
I'm noticing that.
Just include, just include it in the decommissioning. Also, and all poles must be removed, that's a.
Because they still own an easement.
Yeah, the National, there are National Grid's poles. And who cares if they're there? It's, you could have a subdivision and get, and get the electricity to the back of the lot.
I'm saying on decommissioning.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, these.
Why would you want to decommission?
It's not just one pole. I mean, you take a look, like, you know, there's 20 poles out there at the edge of the road, you know?
Sorry.
Bring us back in. Sorry, one at a time.
The reason I'm bringing it up is, so 20 years from now, your kids would have owned the land and they want to build houses or they don't, they want to make a farm field. They don't want the poles there. They have no reason.
Just, just include poles and just put a line in including poles as far as the decommissioning.
National Grid owns the poles.
See, no, you know, that's why I'm just bringing it up.
Well, they get an easement and they install the poles.
Great question for our National Grid guy.
That's what I was going to say. I'll talk to Bob Moran about that.
Okay.
I think something like that too, like a phone call would, you call the right person, they can remove the poles pretty quickly.
And just through the chair, I think, Mike, I think my more concern with solar and stuff like that is, who's, who's there in 20 years or 17 years if the check stops coming to the property owner? Right? And the company goes out of business and they're sitting there with this on their land. So at least we've gone forward with making sure there was some decommissioning bond, money put aside, which is going to help.
And through, I agree, but you said that some, we don't know, nobody, we would try to guess.
Yeah, so we're going to find out. Mr. Benoit's going to find out.
Along with inflation, that's going to be the key.
Okay, next height. Height measurement.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Step one, spelling height.
Yeah, right out the gate. Yes, Madam Chair, this is proposed language from our building commissioner. He gave us a diagram to give us a general idea of what he's trying to say here. This language is not exactly catered to the bylaw just yet. Just wanted to grab his thoughts on it. This would go into just the definition, the section of the bylaw. It's not going to have its own section otherwise. Just want to be able to make his height and his elevation determinations in the definitions. Just curious if there are any comments about the language he has here.
I like to use mean, not average, but that's me.
That makes sense.
And you can kind of play with average more, so.
Okay.
Through, through the chair, in the elevation diagram, they're not measuring off of the edge of the roof?
So that's another issue with different style roofs as well. I believe, does NADAC have one, the diagrams?
Yeah.
So we've got hip roofs, we've got flat roofs, we've got mansard roofs. I believe that that needs to be clarified. And it's, yes?
In most communities, it's just up to the determination of the commissioner and it can vary depending on the commissioner. So that's kind of the reason here is, is this is how our commissioner wants to determine this. And I understand where we're coming from here. One of the things I just wanted to bring to the board's attention is, when you're measuring the front versus the rear of a basement and what's considered a story, I thought that was important to include in here where it's, if it's six feet above grade before the first floor in the front, more than six feet is considered a story. But if it's in the back and the grade changes, 12 feet from the base to the first floor, anything over that becomes a story also. So I guess there's a lot of instances where he's run into some different situations in this town and, and he thought it was. and he thought it was necessary to clarify this. I believe he actually spoke to some builders and they were on the same page about this also. So, just wanted to throw that out there, just kind of on behalf of the commissioner who is not here this evening.
Just through the chair, I think the elevation diagram that he's showing is more like of a lakeside lot that you'd find over in Webster's like that, that have multiple stories.
Yep.
So, it'd just be curious of how, if he gets a couple of different samples of different scenarios to make sure that they're all going to be valid and not breaking anything for like walkouts and things. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, we'll have some feedback for the next meeting, and then we have.
Does the building commissioner want to come in and just go over it with us on what he really want to have or just us? Do you think he'd like to come in or?
Tighten it up.
I can ask next meeting if you'd like, you just had a conflict this evening.
No, no, it's fine.
Sure.
That way, here we.
At least get his opinion on it.
The board would like that.
And some explanation on why, I'll come.
Madam Chair, as for zoning bylaws, there were two others that we discussed at a previous meeting, was changes to the residential compound and changes to the site plan review since there's no advertising or putters notice. I didn't put drafts together for that just yet, those are minor changes, I'll have those ready for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Through the chair, Matt, do you know what time, Ms. Thomas Benoit, when do we have to present some of that in front of the selectmen so they can here put on a warrant? Because our cutoff date is usually the second week in March.
Yes, the placeholder reservations need to be made by March 4th. We have one more meeting to at least consider these for placeholders. Finalize anything before we send it to selectmen, public hearing, the whole process.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to give any other updates before the Oak Street, Solar and 45 Oak?
Let's see. Whiten Heights, no. Walmsley Solar, Deer Crossing, Evergreen Estates, no. Stonegate Development, we did get a work program from the peer review consultant and a check from Mr. Afferty to start the process on the public street acceptance for that road. This would be one of our placeholders for town meeting for public road acceptance, presuming that this process moves fast enough.
Yeah.
All right, it may not, but it's good for a placeholder and we could pull it off the town meeting floor if it's not done fast.
Okay, great. Okay.
As for Oak Street.
Yes.
So, similar situation there, they also asked for a bond estimate. They were going back and forth with a peer review consultant there. The one thing I wanted to point out, and I believe Mr. Zwick is recused for the discussion again, but one thing I want to point out, there was a discussion at a selectman meeting about this item, there's some pole petitions before them. Along the scenic road of Oak Street, originally, I think much of the board may have presumed that the transformer's going to be on site here, this is another reason why we need a solar bylaw.
Okay.
I think the petition was to have a lot of these transformers on 40-foot poles along the right of way of Oak Street. I must lean to our recused members just to verify that, is that true?
We never saw a full layout, so I can't answer all of that.
Okay, so it was speculative. And what I understand is even though we did issue a scenic road permit, we do have a decision that had a condition on it that said, "Site telephone pole quantity and location shall be approved by the planning board prior to installation." So, my recommendation to the board is that we make a motion to submit a letter to the board of selectmen citing this condition and for them to direct the applicant back to the planning board for the modification.
Do I hear a motion made by Mr. Stevens? Mr. Zwick is recused for the record. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schulzberg, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so they'll be back here as a discussion item?
Does it have to do a lot with the scenic road?
Um, to get our approval for the quantity and locations of the poles before install.
Yeah, just through the chair, it's pretty similar to what they were doing on, was it all?
Walnut Street from Walmsley Solar, yeah.
Poles to offset the power.
They're much bigger poles, they're much higher.
Correct. Newark.
Newark. The poles on Oak Street are old toothpicks. They could be, they could be used, they could be redone, yes.
Through the chair, the biggest problem that was being discussed at that selectman's meeting was they want to put cable wires on all these poles in everybody's property.
Guide wires.
So, that's some of the big issues.
Okay, well, let's wait till they get to us and let's move along because it's 8:57. Anything else, recommendation for Lanza Bear, that's coming along?
The main issue we had here, Madam Chair, was locating the actual approved plans for Preservation Park. We think we found them, they're incredibly old, just bad condition anyways. Scanning them in's not going to work, so.
What year were they?
It was 95, they're not, I mean, it just seems like it's not so long ago, but it really is just a plan, they use different paper. It didn't really hold up that well, so Preservation Park, Conservation Drive.
Yeah, there's no records and the tiny URL from the prior town engineer.
Once our town engineer left, his tiny URLs went with him.
They did not.
Well, that's what our IT guy told us.
It's no longer linked anymore, but they were for a long, long time.
That's what our.
Summertime.
That's what our IT guy told us, so.
Well, I pulled up Evergreen Estates at the tech meeting in summertime, so they were available.
Okay.
I don't know if you can look in the historic files.
Oh, check.
Just through the chair, I don't believe in 95, that subdivision was, I'm not sure if Mr. Kondov was with us at that time.
Not sure.
20.
Which one are you talking about?
Preservation, Conservation Drive.
Yeah, maybe not.
Yeah, what about it, what are you asking about it? It went bankrupt.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think Bill was with us then, I think he came in after.
Uh, no, he wasn't with us then.
And so, and I think, Mr. Benoit, I think your best trade, maybe his engineering company, that may be still viable.
The plans weren't recorded at the registry?
I didn't find anything on record, so I'll look again, and there's so many different ways you could look at the registry.
Yeah.
For the name, whether it's the developer, the street, anyway, so I did reach out to Andrews, it was Andrews Engineering did the plan. I reached out to Byron to see if he could find something for me, so.
I'll look through the registry for you and the file, see if I see anything for that time first.
You could. Our recommended surveyor is ready to go, he just needs that, so.
Yep, excellent.
Okay, do you want to just quickly skim through the minutes, December 9?
Back to the page.
They're placeholders.
We can hold off the next minute.
Yeah, whatever the board wants to do.
Madam Chair, may I ask if Mr. Greco has comments on the minute?
I have a few comments also. Mr. Schulzberg's name is spelled incorrectly. The, I don't know, Jeff something, peer review consultant.
Walsh.
Walsh. The number five additional business.
Mm-hmm. Nope, right there.
Mr. Greco?
Mr. Mike?
How's the meeting minutes?
The only one referenced here is December 9.
Yeah.
And it just showed up in the packet, so I.
Next meeting.
Number eight, the address, Davis Street.
Yeah, very good.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, he's good.
For the minutes.
Yep.
Hmm?
Motion. She was mad at the chair. Motion to the chair.
Okay.
Trying to read them quick.
I've got a recorded plan from 1996 for Conservation Drive.
Wonderful. Is it just the lot layout, does it have the bounds, that's the, they usually just record the lot layout. Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find.
It was Mumford West Street, Conservation Drive, did you see that one?
I seen the lot layout plan, but not the one with the bounds, so that doesn't bother me.
I don't think you're going to find much.
No. Maybe we will.
Yeah.
Through the chair, so it's normal, I did fill out the Mullen.
Yes.
Excellent.
For the last meeting. So, everything's in the chair.
Through the chair.
Well, there's eight pages, did you see the one with eight pages?
We have to sign these? I don't think so.
Um, yeah, you got to talk to them.
Oh, yeah, I got it right here.
Very well. That, thank you.
Want to write it down? Plan book 706, page 95, Plan 95.
Okay, thank you.
And it's got, I see a couple of the concrete bounds, did you see this one? Can you see that file?
Yeah, it looks like the plan we have on the.
Eight pages?
Yeah, ours, the one we have is like 20, but it's just hard to read, so hopefully that's, that'll work.
I'll try to email it to you.
It's okay, I got the book and page.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I received this in my packet, am I supposed to sign this and return it to you?
Yes, please.
Just take the top page?
Yep.
Yep, I'll take the signature page, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion or we can save it to the next meeting.
Save it to the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
No, I, I'll bring it up to the chair one second. I, no, I attended the selectman's meeting here the other week.
Yeah.
And something that came up kind of caught me off guard. When the selectman is a licensing committee, they can change the hours of operation on things that we vote on in a public hearing, on site plan review. So, it's a gray area of what's going on, we're having a public hearing and taking input from the audience and stuff on hours of operation.
For business.
For business. Then when that goes in front of the selectman for a license, they can change everything we did.
So.
Yes.
Madam Chair, so I went back and forth to the town administrator about this. Selectmen, planning, and zoning all have the authority to do business hours. It's based on public welfare, butters feedback, et cetera, depends on what it is. The issue we have now is that for marijuana establishments, the licensing authority, it says straight in there that the selectmen will be regulating such hours. It seems to be, and we sent this out to town council for an opinion, but it seems to be the only case so far that where the selectmen can really regulate the hours, because that's a little different. The marijuana usage is a new regulation, it's not technically in our bylaws, it's only located in general bylaw for the licensing. So, that's definitely a gray one, for sure, and it's going to trickle down to some other instances.
Are we still recording the meeting? Okay.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you.
No, good question. So, we'll probably uncover some other instances that are issues. We haven't got that answer yet.
Oh, okay. Which way do they go, like more hours? Oh.
So, it's a circumstance where, and I understand it's been brought up, and that's why it's like a rile of a lot of, kind of feel it out on what was going on, where, and I don't even know if they even knew what was decided on by us. And don't get me wrong, the selectmen, they decided to do what they wanted to do on the hours of operation on the license, but yet we have the public involved more when we make those decisions for a license with the community and where it's at. So, it's, and it's great, if they want to think, I mean, if it's their gig, it's their gig, then we, we're not even going to bring it up. I mean, because we're wasting our breath.
Mike, we control the hours of operation for projects, but we don't control licensing like for package stores or marijuana facilities. The selectmen treat those two pretty much the same. They okay the license on liquor stores and marijuana. Right, in the past, we've done hours like for gravel removal or we control the hours of operation. We've listed the hours of operation, but we don't do it for licensing.
It's just, yeah, and every one of our site plan reviews, we've had hours of operation. We've had, we've always asked, when do you want to open? When do you want to close?
Right.
Period. We've done that, I've been here 13 years, and we've been doing it for 13 years. That's why it took me off guard when that was done. Now, I understand, they have the licenses, don't get me wrong. But we've always been tasked with doing all that, setting up hours of operation on a business even. Gravel pits too, and businesses we've done it with. So, it's not just gravel pits.
No, but I mean, it's different when it comes to licensing for alcohol establishments, and we have no say in that, basically.
Just through the chair, I think when a project's before us and they come and say, hey, I want to be open between, you know, 8 and 6 o'clock, we grant the, you know, special permit for the site plan that moves forward and stuff like that. They get their licensing, three years from now, you know, they say, hey, the next town over, they're open at 6 o'clock in the morning, 6 to 6. So, when they go to renew their license, it's not going to come back before us, it would come back before them, so.
Correction, it's not a special permit, so site plan approval, but if we are determining to grant a special permit, and this is where it gets a little mixy, and it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, that could pose an issue if we are basing our decision and we're saying it's not detrimental, and then something goes like 24 hours a day in a neighborhood, I can see where there's a disconnect there. I didn't really know.
This is in the decision, this is on record on what we decided, so it's a change. So, now does it need to go back and we need to change that decision because it's now considered a minor change? And because it's recorded. So, this is where I'm going, we're, it's that greater?
Well, the site plan approval doesn't need to be reported.
It's also not in the statute.
Yeah, there's no appeals.
So, again, it's getting vetted, going to council, we're going to uncover some stuff. It being site plan approval, it's not even in the statute, so it's really based on public welfare, like you said, so we'll see what it comes.
Put your hand where you want.
Yeah, okay.
Very good.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marks, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.